Now. I did not give that to Jack.
We can just skip it then.
Okay. I might have gave it, I might have given it to her. If time permits.
Right.
So that doesn't have to be in order.
Okay.
I don't have the LIDs on there. I guess I need to be more specific. Okay. I should have been on top of that earlier. So we have no. Audience today, I applaud you all for wearing partnership shirts. I will debate the hack rule for tonight. Then we have no audience.
She'll be on momentarily. She'll be on momentarily.
You know, you can read in the water. I think if I ask Lauren one more time to take off the hat in the meeting. Yeah. But you're going to need the microphone, so probably want to put. Oh, yeah. It's better out. You can't talk without being heard.
It's just with the Zoom connecting, it's really hard for them to hear you.
So whatever you're hoping for. She not heard, you can't record it.
Get the turn on.
Just push the, yeah, push the button on the base.
Turn it off, so they don't hear you snore.
By the way, tomorrow I'm running executive meeting.
What?
Executive meeting, work invasion tomorrow night.
I told you last month, I'm so embarrassed. I told you, I'm going to put on my calendar right then, I was tired. And I got some place. It was Sunday. Yeah. More, what time?
Eighteen on. Wait, wait, your last minute.
Yeah. I could say you got me the day before and I just forgot.
I don't think George Shaw is home, so I don't know who it is.
Um, I've seen Joan recently. I see her after she's either on the garden or weed wasn't the ditches or. And she just doesn't stop. Do you think she's been a master surgeon? Was there a quorum last time in order to. Post the officers? Were they able to post the officers?
Yeah, we got that done.
Oh.
Yeah, Richard, that was a new commander.
I heard that.
He went out recruiting, he got two new recruits.
Sweet, good deal. He's pushed him now.
I think he's a lord.
Do you, uh, do you have a post?
Mm hmm.
He's being a man.
Let's feel me.
Yeah, you can transfer that.
Transfer it to you guys?
Yeah.
You'd probably kill me.
Uh, that's only give Rebecca. I'm expecting to keep looking, put that ankle bracelet around you. Bill's going to go off, you get five more than five miles per hour. We get a lot of transfers. I will get Louie. Yeah, it's, he's starting to kind of settle and settle down.
Jackie, you connected?
I'm here.
Great.
Okay, let's start the meeting. Can we take attendance, roll call?
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Custer?
Here.
Commissioner Partain?
She is not here.
Commissioner Gobleman?
Here.
Commissioner Weimhold?
Here.
Commissioner Hoag?
Here.
And Spleedoff resigned, I heard.
Well, unofficially yet, I haven't got the letter, but that's the word.
Okay.
He is not here.
Okay.
Okay, we had hoped to finish up the low impact development code amendment recommendations. Minus all the red lines, you know, last time. However, we don't have current copies of that, so. What I am proposing is a discussion. About short term rentals in city of Oak Ridge. I will use Airbnbs as, because everybody recognizes that term, but I'm not saying Airbnb. In a negative sense, we're cornering them out because there are a lot of other agencies who do the same type of. Short term rentals for. It is unfair to the existing paying tax lodging facilities that we have. And I have personally noted evidences where some of these. Again, Airbnb's are unsafe. They don't, they're not complying to. Building code, safety requirements. Oh. Yes, Jackie?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. So this would, tonight's discussion, I believe. Would end up as a recommendation to either move forward to investigate it further. To city council. I believe that's the way, we don't have the authority to make an ordinance. But I believe that it's, it's something the city needs. We have dozens of Airbnbs like. Short term residences here in the city. And it's not fair to the lodging establishments that are paying. With that, there's a zillion questions, if you think, even on the surface. What needs to be done, how it needs to be done, how it needs to be regulated, how it needs to be enforced? How much staff participation, cost, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd like to hear some input from commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Hope? For guidelines. Would we generally look to the county or the type of cities that have rules? There are actually companies out there that will do this thing from start to finish. They will determine which. Units are available with, and it has to be in our city limits, so we wouldn't be asking the county for that. It wouldn't go outside our city limits. But there are companies who do everything from identifying. Identifying, they can even identify the number of states. They can. Establish or help establish an ordinance. Along with. Plan schedules, that sort of thing. Because obviously, if somebody's got a house down wherever. And they have a place in the back for an attic space and they rent it up, how are we to know? And so that becomes very difficult. Through the reading I've done, this is very much doable without putting a lot of burden on our staff. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Weimhold, first question would be, you know, who's, who's the compliance person?
Well, evidently, these companies do everything other than physically going out. But they know because they hit every site that's out there. The for rent by owners, Airbnb, there's evidently dozens of these type of companies that people go through. And if there's a suspected violation. Okay, these companies have been doing this for over 20 years, 25 years. So they would help us work through the legality of. When do we send these homeowners a notice that we suspect they're not complying? Yeah, they are going through the steps. It can be very complicated. These companies evidently are used to working with very large cities and very small cities. So they understand that we don't have a lot of manpower, nor do we have a lot of budget to force this. And what these companies do primarily from what I've seen, they take a cut. Of whatever, because we would be establishing the tax. And I'm sure even there, we would get consultation from them on what is. Cities like ours, what's considered a fair tax on these Airbnb. I don't, you know, I think we should be. Obviously fair, I'm that up to rip these people up, I mean, we need the Airbnb's in this town. Because there are times in the summer where. Even in the fall during preseason, or spring during preseason season, that are normally. Our motels are full and the overflow occurs to the Airbnb. But I think they need to be brought under the wing, the same wing that motels are under. Okay. Yes, Commissioner Goldman?
So I understand that some of the listing services do take care of the taxes.
Yes, and yes, they do. Um, I think Airbnb is one of, you said, they will pull out the amount. But I know there's a number of Airbnb's here in town. Now, I don't think our city has ever received any Airbnb taxation or.
It would be wrapped into the TRT tax. However, I, looking at the last business license list, there's maybe one Airbnb listed. Which is what, you know, so. There's no way to really, well, I suppose you could dive into the county records to see which facilities are paying taxes. Within the city. But Commissioner Goble was right, Airbnb does collect a tax for you and send it to Lake County and further distributes back to the city. And some of the bigger ones, I think, continue to do that just because they got so much grief from nationwide for not paying taxes. This came up as a preliminary discussion item one time in council, just very briefly. And the concern was, is that the definition of a short term stay was another problem. So is it 30 days or what, is it two weeks? Because that makes a big difference, particularly if there are some people that rent out their parts of their home. To forest service worker or firefighter or whatever. So there was some concern there, but. In addition, the hotels also go through a health inspection. And that is something, you know, they would register, if they did it right, they would register with the city, get a business license, register in Lake County as a tax paying entity. And that would open them up to be inspected by the health, Lake County Health.
Okay, um, I know one incidents that, or one example where I believe if it's 30 days or longer. Then it's basically considered a lease. And you're in a month to month, so 29 days and less. And again, I think these companies have sufficient knowledge of all that. And hopefully, that would come up in the initial package in order to do more research on it, on this, taking that call. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, is it unreasonable to expect them to pay the same taxes at the motel store?
Didn't say it could be the same rate, but we need to, maybe it is, maybe it isn't.
Well, it's automatic, yeah, it's, it's automatic. Once you register in Lake County, you're paying that same rate. The city really has no control over it, if you pay the 9.8%. I think it's 9.8.
So we can, all we could do, we could add to that, but not take away from that.
Right. Well, I don't. I don't know, again, that's, I don't know if that's correct about adding to it. I know that you have a certain hotel tax.
That's countywide.
Yeah, of course, not a pays for the state tourism and the other portion goes to Lake County and the cities. Based on their, their stays.
I think the city has, has the right to.
Add to the tax.
Add the additional taxes. Can't quote me on it. Commissioner Gobleman?
I was just going to say that, copying some of the motel owners, that is the case for. If they're staying in the motel, that's, that's 29 days and a half of them. They don't have to pay that.
No, I find that, I know a lot of people suffering their income by having tenants back room or trailer out in the back of the house. Or whatever, and that's fine, but I think the, the short term. Rentals, I think, need to be brought in under. They say hospitable. My field.
So does everybody have this? Guide to short term loans?
Should have all gone by the one point.
Yeah. And then we have, did everyone still remember this?
Not, not in the birdcage, not on the birdcage.
So Rick, Rick did a kind of. The synopsis, so to speak, for short term rentals following the code.
Oh, I did not get that.
Yeah, October 14th, 14th last year. Because I think when they were discussing in Congress.
Right.
So maybe we want to revisit that email and redistribute it.
Yes.
And if everybody's put this in the birdcage, we can give them the call.
So with that, do we want to put this discussion on hold until, if all commissioners had a chance to read it a little bit more?
I think you're right, George. If we have a way, if there's a way, they need to track them down. Right, because that's the, that's the big concern is understanding which location of this. That are listed that way, not just ordered out. I think that would, that would be cause to investigate the cost and see if that balances what we can do.
And if the taxes go directly to the county, then the county may have, may have some input on that, whether or not.
You know, if they're not registered with the county, I don't think they're going to come chase them down. And these, these outfits that you're talking about, and I did some, I was doing my research. Like you said, all they're doing is scouring all the websites and figuring out how many people are listing rentals on their, on all these different sites. And then they give you a number. And actually, since I was doing my research, they, they actually, and now I get all their junk mail. And, and they tell you, you know, exactly how many are listed in your city. That's what I was doing, I was finding out how many were in the city.
So they're kind of tempting you.
Wanted me to buy their services, yeah. But, yeah, they, that's what they, that's how they find out. And then it is, like you say, the onus is on the city to pursue going after those units that are not listed with a business license, listed with Lake County.
But would the Lake County have to agree because they'd be taking a portion? Of. Those, well, the intent is to get everybody signed up, done, pay the taxes. Lake County is going to love that, but when these companies say, well, we're taking. 10, 15%, Lake County are going to go, oh, wait a minute.
Well, it depends on how they, I didn't really research how they actually got their, their pay. So I would guess it's probably coming out of the city that, because we hired them. It's not going to be coming out of the, whatever they collect on each of these for tax.
Well, no, I went to the websites and it kind of appeared that that's. So, so it's not a, it's not fee based, it's a percentage based off of. The collected amount.
Might be, but I can't believe that Lake County would be accepting that, funding them directly. What they're going to do is take a percentage of what the Airbnb taxes and say, you owe us, city owes us this much money. Took in this much and here's how much you owe us.
And that would be the legitimate person, person that's going to pay.
Right.
You can almost do all that research yourself, which is styling Airbnb, you know. And check it against businesses.
So, you know, that's changing continually and.
Just require a lot of work.
Yeah.
By somebody.
A lot of staff time, and then you still have compliance. And the rest of that comes with this, and these companies, actually, this thing was written by one of the, the CEO of one of those companies. And, you know, they, they promised the world, I went to two other websites. They kind of do the same thing, so these aren't the only guys in town. They pitch a good, and make a good pitch to. Help cities like ourselves, because people found out, registered, collecting at appropriate levels. And help you write such language for fines and other enforcement measures. Yes, Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, do we currently have a code enforcement officer in the shop?
Not yet. With the EPA grant that we got, we were able to. They are going to pay one FTE for a code enforcement officer as long as we can say that we're contributing 2,080 hours each year to smoke enforcement. But on the other side of that, because all officers do smoke enforcement, so all their time counts. So we're going to use this other officer on a part-time basis to co-enforcement. She's currently in the academy and returns in October.
This will be.
It will, that will be our primary duty is code enforcement officer.
But not necessarily in this regard. If there is means that we can. Gently enforce this without a knock on your door, I think, now, it's going to be bad enough. These people who are doing these short term rentals are going to be, now, they're not going to like the city, but people. Don't seem to have a problem. Slime and city for this, but you know, so, you know, if we're missing a lot of revenue and we run a really tight budget here. If we go to dollars and make it. More fair for the motels, then I think we're in that direction. Commissioner Hope?
Just, just for my own information. At what point or what level of description or physical structure would you? Not call it an Airbnb?
If they are camping in your private lot, who are not being charged a fee, that's a short term rental. And I believe Airbnb, because you can put your tent, there's yours on there, there's all kinds of. They call rustic facilities listed on Airbnb.
Okay.
And Airbnb takes their cut. So pretty much, yeah.
So if they have five acres.
It goes. Yeah, or they, in your backyard and they agree to pay Airbnb and, and your $40 a night or whatever you want to charge, then it's a short term rental. As I understand it, I do not know the legal definition of short terminals, I believe there was a definition in the back, which I never got to.
Just by, I mean, the structure wise, you have three stories of.
Yeah, I don't think there's any place, that's his own free, free story on Oak Ridge, but in theory.
Yeah.
Build a great big building and petition all off, don't tell anybody.
If the price.
Mr. Administrator, what are your thoughts generally on this discussion?
Yeah, I think, I think they do need to get a business license, I do think they need to register with Lake County. And just like any other lodging establishment. You know, they're, they're. Should pay the tax, just like, just like our, our folks do. Enforcement is the hard part with all these, just the way it is. So I guess it would be a balance of, can you afford to hire an outfit like this where you probably get better enforcement rates? Or do you kind of do it the best you can with what you have for staff? I mean, it would be a, you probably want to do a query once a month or something and get the number of short term rentals. In your area on all the different websites and then try to find a way to go in and just pick out the ones that you know are registered and go after them. So there might be a way to do it inexpensively.
And that only established is the. The fact getting them registered. Then these companies say they can figure out how many times a month, because someone say, well. Then these companies say they can figure out how many times a month, because someone say, well, I haven't run it up for six months, but.
Right.
Neighbors will say, well, as far as Airbnb.
And I, and I will tell you that I have received complaints from some citizens about Airbnbs operating next door to them and be disturbing, particularly some of the ones that have like a a large turn, you know, doing well and have a lot of people coming and going and parties and all that kind of thing. And I know in even in bigger cities, that's an issue with parking and with everything else is, is that they bring this, these problems, but. So that's another reason you probably would want to look at the, where you put them, you know, where are they allowed?
So according to what the short-term vacation rental, also called vacation rental or sure-term rental, is most often defined as a rental of a residence, dwelling or accessory building in a period of less than thirty-one consecutive days. The example is Miller rents out one more room of his primary home.
Pretty, pretty close to what we were. Yes, the, and there are in these cases, like City Administrator has mentioned, people are going, you know, I bought my house, I want to protect my, if I want to sell my house, they find out there's an Airbnb next door. They start asking around the neighborhood. Well, your values go down. So no one wants to move into your house and then find out that the next door, they've got a courtyard going on, or some along the way, right? And I can feel for that. When I was looking to rent some Airbnbs for my travels, Oak Ridge kept popping up. And so I noticed how many there were in town here. It's surprising.
Yeah, I think the company, when I queried them, they come up somewhere around seventy-four.
Oh.
And that was, I think, but that included Westford as well.
Regardless, that's a surprising number, I think. And I've seen no less than two places that have illegal stairways, don't have proper egress windows. These are safety issues. Don't have smoke detectors. Oh, they'll put it in the room. Well, they don't put it in the hallway, they need to be room. They don't put them in stairwells and you know, first time somebody gets killed or there's a serious injury, there's a likelihood they can come back to the city. Well, I'm an Airbnb. What, what was the city doing to protect me? Where was the fire department? Why weren't they inspecting this place? So, uh, now lawsuits years ago for the deepest pocket. And quite often that, that's going to be a municipality. So there's, there's a bit of an issue there. Nothing else for self-preservation and protection. Again, though, we've got all these questions and again, reading through this, understand that it was written by the CEO of one of these companies. But he makes a good pitch and if they uncover all the bases and customize this thing so it doesn't cost the municipality, it's always going to be, it appears to always be a percentage. So it's kind of a win-win for us because no matter how much they take out, if we get anything, anything is more than nothing we've been given. And again, I think it's going to make the hotel owners happy, other lodging facilities. I understand that there, there is a temporary lodging facility next to one of our tech paying facilities. And there's a little bit of angst there. And I don't blame them. I would have that same, same response. I've got, I've got a motel, a boarding house, whatever. Pay them a tax, and then all of a sudden the house next door has got people parking all over the streets and they're up and partying all night, having a good old time. And the people next door who are rolling in the money, while you're having a hard time just paying your own, keeping yourself above water, making your own living out of it. That's the thing, the motel owners, that's their living for these temporary rentals. It's great that they have it because it helps us with our lodging. And the people who are doing this are getting an extra income. And a lot of people, maybe above the basic necessity level. So I applaud them for that. I, I hope they all do well, but there is a sense of, or a necessary sense of responsibility that needs to be meted up. Someone, someone tell Mayor Mark, someone argue with.
I want agreement.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
What amenities would be, the institution would be required for single group house that would be called.
I think they're going to move. I heard it was your neighbor.
Yeah. Bless you.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Normally, as long as they keep me standard code, primarily fire code. Fire codes are going to be the most restrictive for, because these are primarily rented out as bedrooms. Sometimes it's a whole house, but the sleeping quarters are the most important aspect. If you don't have an egress window, or if you have an egress window, that isn't a code. If you don't have smoke detector. You know, you can have dirt on the floor and candle if you feel so inclined. But the fire department knows what to look for and they set standards. Which kind of, if we remember back from, in the early times, we were talking about tiny homes. The, the state fire marshal said, no way, don't approve of these, they're not safe. And the powers that be said, too bad, we're doing it anyhow. Because we want tiny homes. Not any, any danger. But yes, part, I think they're visible, if you don't, they don't have to have the building inspector there. The fire marshal should make a courtesy walk here, make sure that they got smoke detectors and they're all working. Through, how many people have checked their smoke detectors every six months? Like if they're supposed to. Oh, I, I knew you had, Kevin. USA, Commissioner Whitehall. Oh, well.
Time change.
Do you?
Time change, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's my reminder.
Checklist of things to do. I, I get, I used to buy those ten-year ones. You can't replace the battery there. But when you buy them, they may have been manufactured five years ago. You got to check on those. Other discussion.
Well, it seems to be that we, we definitely have got to we've got to do some more research. It'd be handy to find out. We talked to hotels around here about what are the rules they're, they're abiding by? Like if we open a hall of it's not clear to me what rules they're abiding by in order to operate to begin with, but they're all short-term.
They, they, like I said, they just, it's register with Lake County Tax Authority. And when they do a transaction, every time someone checks in, they take out the nine-point-eight percent tax or add the nine-point-eight percent tax to the bill. And that automatically gets shuttled to, to Lake County.
Right, that's, that's a tactic. I'm, I'm concerned about the
Health?
The ordinance, it's health, health, fire insurance, you know, all the stuff they're supposed to be carrying. You would think you're carrying it on your home to begin with.
Right.
There are a few people who aren't. And if they're renting rooms out and supplementing income and then don't have homeowners insurance, because the house is paid for, at that point, nobody's making you carry an insurance. How do you, you know, how do you track this down?
Well, I believe the motels are, have to register with the public, with the county health department.
Yep.
They come out and they can expect, kind of do the same, I think they look at the same type of issues that the fire department would look at. But along the insurance lines, say you have a house, you, you got a mortgage on it and you're running it out part, part-time. And it's sort of like you're trying to rent your car out. The insurance company finds out, like, no, 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 we're insuring your, your household. We're not insuring people to come in on a paid basis. That's, that's a business. It's a whole, now, now you need business insurance.
Yeah.
So, again, there's a, so.
Somebody out here in the interland of Oak Ridge, I'm not sure how many insurance agents trotting out here to check up on us, because mine has never been here. And he has even for Oak Ridge.
I'm with USA and they're in Texas. Well, they're all over, but they're a great insurance company.
Right.
The, but I'm just saying is, say, somebody caught your house burned down. I usually can say, oh, well, and if they lost their stuff, they're going to turn, they're going to turn to your insurance company.
Right.
Or if there's any injury, they're going to come to your insurance company, your insurance company go. We didn't insure this as a business for a Airbnb. So you could lose the people who aren't going to be able to claim against you. Insurance company, that situation all the way around financially.
Well, I, I guess my issue is that you wouldn't know that until it happens. So for five, ten years, this is going on, and then they have a fire. So for ten years, you wouldn't know that there, somebody was operating a, a short-term rental out of their home until something happened and all of a sudden you see red start pointing all this information.
I'd say with a happier time.
That would be about the point you would find out.
Well, that's how way insurance works.
Yeah.
You don't need it till you need it. We pay, pay, pay. The, if it's your Airbnb tenant gets all, they're up hiking the woods, all their stuff, maybe including their car, gets destroyed because of the fire, maybe, you know, it was yours or faulty wire or whatever. They're going to go to your insurance, or they're going to go to their insurance company, who's going to go to your insurance company and say, my guy was a, a tenant there. Right. And your insurance, your insurance company, and upon how good they are, could say, oh, well, we're not covering that fine. So there's, there's issues there that rare, but that's why we all have insurance is for the extremely rare occurrences that happen. Yes, Commissioner Ho.
My tiny home parks, property. Favorite to have the owner of the property on site. Would that be something, you know, an Airbnb would have to have? Over living or.
No, not necessarily. Lot of places, and I believe there's a number around here where you can rent an entire house. And they give you a code, you walk in, you stay, stay your weekend and off you go. And if you cleaned it right, you get your cleaning deposit back. If you didn't, they take it. And then they change the code. So, no, I don't think that's a requirement. But as long as the house is safe, then it wouldn't be an issue. Like I say, it sounds like, I didn't know there had already been some complaints here locally. But that could be something that we might have to deal with on registering these places. They're obviously going to have to sign an agreement that, you know, hours of operation, noise, curfew, where they can park where they can park. Lots of things that have to go onto this in order to protect the neighbors and the neighborhood. Make them feel comfy about it. Yes, Commissioner Whitehall.
I would think that would be part of the, the business operation, license, operating license. That, that stuff would be defined there. And the, the guy who's running it, whoever that is, you know, their signature would indicate that they understand they're supposed to be carrying insurance, get fire marshal inspections, you know, monthly or weekly, whatever. Health inspections, all of that. I would think that would be part of the business license application process that you know, we would be defining the things that are required in order for you to operate as Airbnb care.
Sure, it's all those, like all the boilerplate stuff in the contracts. First page says, you're doing this for this amount. And the next ten pages, all the gobbledygook, talking about all the things you can and can't do.
So this, uh, this brings up an issue that it brings up an issue that.
Excuse me just a second. Jackie, can you hear Commissioner Whitehall? Jackie?
Yes.
You can hear Commissioner Whitehall, okay?
Yeah, sometimes he's hard to understand, but I can hear most of it.
Okay, so I'm going to have him keep his mic off because he's just a electrified type guy and.
His personality.
There we go.
Sure it is.
The, the, this issue about the, and that's going to come up with this tiny home compensation they're supposed to have in Minnesota. Is that we currently, in Oak Ridge, we require that the owner be on at least one of the properties in one of the, occupying one of the properties. And so that currently has stopped us from, say, purchasing ten acres or whatever here in town and putting up a bunch of tiny homes. Because right now it says, I had occupied one of them. And so that's a compensation when we get down to tiny homes, that we're going to have to, we're going to have to seriously look at that. Because that's stopping, it's stopping a lot of us from doing what we'd like to do.
Sure.
And if you're going to apply that to Airbnb as well, where I, I have my house, I'm building the house up on the hill above my house. If I have to occupy one of them in order to do that, you know, it, it's, it's a restriction that I think in the future is going to create a problem.
Now, there's a difference between tiny homes and ADUs, auxiliary dwelling units. So there's a difference there. We haven't got down to some of the finer points about tiny homes and difference between having a tiny home on a property, which generally constitutes an ADU. But you're talking about establishing, and I, and I agree, I think we need to look at, we, we may take, have to take a look at doing some, recommending some zoning changes to the city in order to accommodate such things as tiny home parks. And I'm in favor of those. I personally believe there should be some sort of manager, whether he's in one of the tiny home. But that does, that's different than what you're talking about, having to have someone live in the main unit. That's, that's, that's for ADUs. You're talking about more of a business. ADUs don't qualify. They don't have to have a business.
Well, that works great until I buy another piece of property, let's say in Oak Ridge. And now I have the two homes on the property there where I'm at currently and the property I have down the street.
Well, then maybe.
You live in the one that has the accessory dwelling unit on it.
And, but if you're going to put two houses.
Well, you're out of luck.
Yeah.
Well, that's where I believe we've got to have a conversation about that.
Well, then, if you're going to rent both the ADU and the main house, right, then why not just rent the main house? Because you can't, you can't have, now you're talking about, you know, one zoning and you're putting two houses on it, not zone for that. Increases sewer and water usage and increases parking, road use, all those utilities that city provides.
Right, that you're paying for. You're paying for them through your taxes.
Right, but you're limited on the amount, that's why we limit.
Why, you're, you're paying for all that.
But that's why we limit the amount of, uh. Units that can be on, because you pay for, but you're not paying for the ADU. The, we, we should actually double all your rates, if you're going to have a permanent ADU there.
We just require a separate order.
Same thing.
Well, currently, according to the city, you can't do that.
Correct. Build another house and rent, rent both of them now, and you go someplace else, but don't build an ADU. You have room to build two houses, if you're not in R1, you can do that. You have, you have a corner lot, right?
Yeah.
And you should be zoned for up to three units.
Right, but I have to occupy one no matter what.
No. Not if you're a corner unit, you can have up to, uh, three units on, uh, but you've got to recall, you got to, you're mandated by footprint. Are you mandated by setbacks, everything else?
Yeah, clear all that before.
Mm-hmm. Well, check your zoning.
What's that?
Yeah, check your zoning.
I think it's R1.
But if, if you're R1 on a corner, I believe that changes to a, to a R2.
I have to look at it again.
Anyhow, discussion to be, that's a discussion you need to have in his office. And then, uh, bringing the results back to here, we'll toss it around some more and see, uh. Not that we can help you, but help a lot of people, maybe in your same situation, if it works for the benefit of the city as a whole.
Well, most of this was aimed at the idea of, of, of purchasing a fairly large lot and building multiple tiny homes on it. And I was told that I have to occupy one of them. That I would have to currently live in one of those units, even though I have a house on the other end of town. I would have to occupy one on the 10 acres. That I want to build a bunch of tiny homes on, I would have to, I would have to live in one. And that's according to Public Works guy who read me the ordinance.
Uh, uh.
And so my conversation at the time with him was, I think that that's an ordinance that we. Need to look at, because it's keeping. It's keeping the city from being able to get more of the rental, you know, rental tiny home issues. They don't think you can, that you can set up as a, a tiny home park or a way, whatever, tiny home park or wherever, you can't do it here.
I would think you could, and I'm not, I'm just thinking, uh, without knowing, but I would think that you would have to be required to have a manager.
We have, we have that discussed.
Either owner or manager.
Mm-hmm. Regardless, you, you'd have to abstain from voting on that.
Uh, yeah, I've had to step out.
Okay, yes, sir. Commissioner Ho.
Uh, another one that may be up, just my own question, I'm going to go to Airbnb, wear it for four days. I enter under the assumption that the owner of the Airbnb has all the general business license, et cetera, et cetera, insurance. Now, if something happens, there's that, the owner has insurance policy, but there's fails to cover certain things. Does the city who issued the business license have a responsibility?
No.
If he's, if he's listed on a, like an Airbnb type site?
Yeah, that's his business, but he.
So they, they have requirements for listings on, of their, you can't just list anything.
Pardon?
Airbnb has, has their own requirements about who can list.
Yeah.
As a, as a landlord.
Uh-huh.
So, uh, I know that when I've stayed at Airbnbs, I, if there's a dispute, you go to Airbnb and they kind of work it back and forth. And then you eventually end up with.
Like the insurance claim.
Uh, so you have a liability?
Yeah, that, that the city took the guy's word, or however it worked in the business license, in this operation. And the man became faulty, did not have the proper, whatever was in charge, would the city be responsible by failure of?
Well, I would generally consider that a breach of contract on their part.
Okay.
And we're likely giving no responsibility whatsoever to the city, but like I say, it's all who has the best.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, always come down to the best, I mean, yeah. Um, because I would imagine you'd be, there would be a indemnifying city, to some degree.
That's one thing.
Which could be in support of a place.
Right.
You operate the business, but you are definitely, we are, you are.
A city. A city.
Yeah, the city doesn't.
Not saying that, that either, you can sign it and be encrammed, but not make it ironed by.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the best way to go, have the, uh, indemnification clause in there. So, um. Unless there's any other questions, do we want to put this on the agenda for our next work session? After we've had a chance to do more reading, look online, uh, check out some of these agencies. Uh, because if we, we need to have a pretty, uh, unified stance if we want to write something up. If we want to, I'm assuming we would go through with a letter from the planning commission to council or to yourself?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Commissioner Ho.
Is there anything, uh, that would detract us from doing this, the pressuring on the, uh, tiny homes? Small, uh, small home planning?
This evening?
No, I mean, to proceed with this in prep of that.
We can, um, I don't want to hold you all under any pretenses that I'm setting the agenda.
Oh, no.
Iron, so, uh, what, what's the desire of the council, of the commission? Do we want to bring tiny homes back in first, next?
I would say if there's nothing pressing on it, and tiny homes is just a step-by-step, again, item, that we could put that on hold for a while.
Okay, the, the Airbnb.
The Airbnb, I would say would be of the preferred things, you know, that, yeah.
Yeah, I think Airbnb's got a big precedent. Airbnb, they can even resolve that.
Wow.
In front of tiny homes.
In front of tiny homes, I think we need to resolve the Airbnb. Because you, you got your hotel owners, they've brought this up in several council meetings before.
And I, I've been told to bring it back soon, so.
Right, and they've brought it up numerous times in city council meetings since last year. Um, that it's, that they feel are getting screwed. And, um, I agree. I think if we're not chasing this down, and, and if the city's not making some kind of effort, but at least with something writing. And get that out publicly. Yeah, I think we're screwed.
Because, again, all we want to do, we're not going to be writing ordinances, we're not going to be spending tremendous amount of in-commission time. Uh, we only need to do a little bit of homework on this, so we feel more comfortable. But if we come to a vote, if we want to do passes, our recommendation on the council, that, that's where it goes, and then we'll. Either I or all workers, city administrators, come up with a, uh, a letter asking council to consider this, yes, Commissioner Ho.
Well, it's not really two separate questions that are concurrent. Which one, the short-term rental, the tiny home? Or is there a distinction?
We have to establish city ordinance and possibly consider zoning issue of tiny homes. And I can say that tiny home can be, tiny home in most instances are probably going to be very similar to. An ADU, with the exception of what Commissioner Whitehall, uh, innovations as tiny home communities. Which I'm in favor, but that's going to take a little more work.
My distinction is important, especially to sort of include in the short-term, a short-term rental.
Tiny homes that become short-term rental, but absolutely. Uh, Commissioner Ho.
Yeah, oh, no, I have.
Please. No, will you, uh, uh, help build consensus here by agreeing that we're going to move forward with the short-term rentals, Airbnbs? And I promise we'll jump right into tiny homes by that point.
Yeah, uh, since, uh.
After we get the, the LID, last revision comes first.
Right, yeah, yeah, we got, definitely got to get that back.
Yes, get that finalized, so I can get to council, and they'll reject that, and they'll come back to us, we'll start all over again, we'll be no issue.
Is that something we think we can get, Brian?
The LID?
Yeah, the LID final, the final version.
Yeah, let me, let me ask Jackie where, if she knows where that is.
I.
I couldn't understand you, if I know where what is.
The, uh, smooth LID for, uh, short-term rentals?
No, the, uh, um, LID packet, there was a bunch of red lines, and then we still made some corrections on the last one. Which probably should go to a crane or glue, whatever color, so that we can finalize that, because the last version. We made some changes to.
I do have that, yes.
Okay, um, yeah, let's plan on getting that to next work session, and we will, uh, uh, try to finish that up. Okay, Jackie?
Yep, sounds good, I can do that.
All right, great. And we have it, so, the, the. Commissioner Ho, are you okay with this?
Yeah.
Moving forward with.
Yeah.
With, uh, short-term rentals and front of tiny homes?
I recommend, uh, the, 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 which is about the path. Of working with short-term rentals. Uh, with Kevin Goldman's, uh, suggestion of the part with, uh, uh.
Tiny homes.
Tiny homes or tiny homes, and there are in that. Uh, that we move forward with that in place of tiny home community or other, I mean. Except, uh.
That was a very nice motion, however, this is a work session, and all I need is consensus that. Save that for next, we have a planning commission meeting.
I agree, I agree with Mr. Ho.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we have, uh, we have consensus there. All right, with that.
No, I didn't.
Okay, with that, uh, is there anything anybody has that they would like to discuss, or things they've seen? No, we, we, we as commissioners have a duty to make this place better for the state. Safety, health, and welfare for the people of our community. Uh, so, when you're out, when you see things, make a mental note or jot something down. But it's, it's our job to recommend to city council changes that will make it a better community, or a more livable community. Economics is a big thing now, we're, we're short of workforce, uh, low-income housing. Uh, we, at some point, I want to take a look at, um, our zoning throughout the city, and see if we need to. Maybe recommend some different zoning to accommodate, um, developments along that line. Um. Parks, thoroughfares, street lighting, lots of, those, those all actually kind of fall under our purview. You hear things from, um, people you know concerning our community, how we can make it better. Do, with the help of a not planning commissioner, bring it here, that's what we're here for. We're supposed to be here, we. Have the transparency for the city, that people can come here and talk to us about what they feel their needs are. With that, does anybody have any other input?
Well, I think a lot of it's in the TSB right now.
Kind of a dandy at this point.
But that's what I was going to ask, for the, uh, TSB committee, for the planning, uh, commission. Our end is finished, we, we, uh, we are finished.
Yeah, public has spoken, the council has spoken.
Yeah, voted.
About, do you have any, before we break up?
Uh, no, no, I am meeting with, uh, virtually with, uh, ODOT and, uh, the consultant tomorrow to discuss, this is going to be the end game with this.
Hmm. Okay, anything else? Need a drink?
Yeah.
So if you don't have professionals guys who effectively regulating short-term rentals on the local government level.
I just sent it to you, all of you, I believe.
Oh.
Only haven't found is, that note, the email, was that from, uh, Rick?
It was a letter, no, it's an email.
What's the date?
Uh, October 14th.
Okay, I have access to his email, so I can forward that out as well.
Can we discuss some more? Yes. Oh.
I wonder, what was on this?
You want to before your time?
Oh, I have this, this part. Yeah, I have this part, that was, that's what ended up in the agenda bill that went to, went to, uh, I can forward that out to everybody.
My truth. Could be.